All right, I'd like to call the Estacada City Council meeting in order. Let's all stand for the Pledge Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Did I get roll call, please? Here.
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 Okay, and before we move on to guest presentations to the council, I just want to remind folks that if we have speaker request forms, they look like this. So if you wanted to make a public comment, they're back there. And then if you could hand them up to Sadie, she will get those over to me. And then we can listen to your comment. So first up, we have Clackamas Community College Bond Renewal Presentation. Yes, please, yes, please.
All right. Well, good evening, council members. I am Jane Reed, and I have been before you before. We actually, Dr. Cook and I have been, we were here about a year ago, I think, talking about the college. And it's really good to be back. I am a forty-seven-year resident. I've just done the math. Now, I'm not forty-seven, but I'm a forty-seven-year resident of Estacada. And I've been on the Board of Education as a trustee for the last sixteen years at the college. So Dr. Cook has been our president for the last six years. And anyway, we are here today to share with you. When we came before, we talked about the success of our previous bond that we had passed in 2014, all the construction that had happened, all the new programming, all of the wonderful things that are going on. And so we're here for you today, talking about our plans. We're calling our this planting seeds for student success. And we are considering a bond renewal for the November election, for the November ballot. And this would be the planned second phase of the college facilities master plan. And it would be a renewal of the existing bond, which was passed, like I said, in 2014. And right now, we're going around the community and talking to a lot of people about this and kind of trying to get feedback and seeing if these projects serve your needs and our community's needs. So that is kind of why we're here. And the next one, thank you, Sadie, is who we are. I hope most of you know who we are. It's, we've been serving Clackamas County for nearly sixty years. And we have campuses in Oregon City, our major campus in Oregon City, but also in Milwaukee, the Harmony Campus, and in Wilsonville. We have more than a hundred career tech programs, a variety of other educational opportunities. And we serve close to nineteen thousand students in the area and employ more than nine hundred hooks, people working there. And if I'm right, you mentioned the other day that we are now the second-largest college, community college in the state with certain numbers, if we do bodies, as opposed to full-time FTE, full-time equivalent. We have the second-most bodies in our school. So, okay, so, Dr. Cook, can you take it from here?
Thank you, thank you, Jane. Thanks again for having us tonight. So yes, my name is Tim Cook. I've been at the college for six years, but I'm actually fifth-generation Clackamas County resident. Folks, I grew up in Oregon City, but my relatives go back in kind of Clackamas proper, I guess, farming for a number of years. So really nice to be in our community, leading Clackamas Community College. So if we can go to the next slide. As Jane mentioned, we have just under twenty thousand students. And it was kind of a surprise to us to learn. We've always thought we were about the fourth-largest community college in the state. But if you look at our headcount, the last couple of years now, we've, we're just second behind PCC. And something else I want to point out on this slide here, you'll see that only fifteen percent of our students are full-time. So flip that, you know, and most, the vast majority of our students are going part-time, not really because they want to, it's kind of because they have to. We're talking parents, we're talking people that are working, that are going to school and really trying to further, you know, themselves and their, and their family's lives. That creates all sorts of challenges for students as they're, as they're trying to manage all this. It's a part of the work that we do to make sure that we're offering education when they need it. And so whether that's, you know, evenings or weekends or online or hybrid to meet those needs. Because really, we know from research that if we can get students to go, if they can't go full-time, to go at least as close as they can, they're more likely to finish. The, the folks that are going, you know, a class are here, there, it's really hard to keep that going for a long time. And then we also see that thirty-two percent of our, or our average age, excuse me, is thirty-two. So our students trend up a little higher, and then about, just about a third of our students are non-racial minorities. Next slide, please. So I probably don't need to tell you what a bond election is. You probably know that. We are, we are being clear, though, that as we look at this, community colleges, we're not allowed, we're only allowed to have facilities bonds. We're not allowed to have levies or anything that pays for people. We're only allowed to have bonds that pay for facilities and equipment. So we are, that is what we're going after here. And something that really helps us make sure that we can continue offering high-quality education that's affordable is what this bond would allow us to do. Next slide, please. So we're thankful. We've had strong community support for actually more than twenty-five years. Our community in Clackamas County has historically supported the college. And we're proud to be good stewards of those taxpayer dollars. So what we're proposing for this year's ballot, November of 2024, is a renewal of the bond that was passed in 2014, and it will not raise taxes. Since 2014, we've had a plan to responsibly ask our voters for support across many years. And we're making this ask as part of that overall plan that has been in place now for more than a decade. Next slide, please. So just a quick reminder, in 2014, we had a bond pass. And we've actually just completed all the projects within that bond this last year. That was a ninety-million-dollar bond that the voters approved. But the college was able to leverage that ninety million dollars and get another forty-six, a little over forty-six million dollars in matching funds and grants and other support. So it ended up being about a hundred thirty-six million dollars that we're able to do. So, you know, we feel like we were really getting good stewards of this money and really look as much as we can. So we got, you know, state matches, we did four brand-new buildings. And for each one of those, we got eight million dollars from the state in match for that. We got a number of grants for seismic work, for a new transit center on the campus. And we even got furniture paid for through grants. So we really are proud of how much we're able to leverage. And also, our board had direction, felt it was really important that we use local contractors and subcontractors when possible. So thirty percent of the projects went to local and small business contractors in Clackamas County, meaning a large portion of this borrowed funding stayed right here in our county, helping our local economy. Next one, please. So a lot went into kind of helping us figure out what we need for the next ten years and beyond. And as Jane said, you know, the, we named this some planting seeds for this bond. And we really are, you know, going on that, that proverb that we are planting trees that we know that will never sit under. Because we all benefit right now from folks that were here ten, twenty, thirty years ago that planted trees for, for us today. So, you know, we're really fortunate in that way. And as we think about what we need to do for the next generation and beyond, we did quite a bit of work. So we did a lot of research and a lot of data collection. We spent over a year doing a concept master plan. We did an athletic facilities master plan and a mechanical, electrical, and plumbing master plan to identify our overall need. Probably not a big surprise, we identified a lot of need, about three hundred and thirty-five million dollars worth of need of the college and knew quite quickly that there's no way that, you know, people could support that. And so we had to really spend some time refining this list of priorities and taking that list. And we pulled it internally and externally to see how these projects resonated. And using that information, we prioritize the following projects that Jane is going to tell you about. Or is that mine? Or you want me to go? Oh, sorry. I'll tell, I'll tell you about it in a second. Thank you. So we, we've got three main themes, and Jane will go into the detail on these. So our first one is we want to prepare students for success in modern learning spaces. So probably going to not a surprise, education's changed dramatically over the last decade. It's not often that we have traditional classrooms anymore, where you have somebody up front lecturing and you have a number of seats, you know, kind of theater-style like this. There's a lot of technology now in classrooms, there's a lot of flexibility. And, and we need to be able to modernize many of our existing space buildings that were built in, you know, nineteen seventy or the early nineteen eighties to really make sure that they're ready to go. The example I've been giving lately is we have many students now that'll be taking a face-to-face class. So they'll be there on a Monday at like ten o'clock. That class gets done at eleven, and then they got to hop onto a Zoom call for their, you know, their online class. So they're either looking for like a nook and cranny somewhere on campus, or they're hopping into, you know, a quiet space, or they're going to their car. So some of the things we've been trying to figure out is, can we, you know, make a bunch of smaller, like almost phone booths or small conference rooms where people can come in and have these, you know, get on classes or have conversations and the rest? Because so much of this now is really hybrid as we work through that. Our second one is we want to enhance our partner community connections. Every talk I give, I mention that community is our college's middle name. And we really take that seriously, and we work really hard to make sure that we're good community partners. And so we'll talk to you a little bit about what that means and what that looks like. And then third, we want to preserve and maintain our assets. So again, we're, we've been very fortunate in, you know, having support all these years. But we also have some aging facilities and aging, you know, that we need to make sure that we can do, do what it takes to really upkeep those so that they can be around for the next fifty years. Now, I think you're gonna go a little bit deeper.
Now I get to go a little bit deeper about, we're looking closer, more closely at that first point, which is preparing students for success in modern learning spaces. And one of the things I find very exciting about this is that we have an opportunity to construct a center for excellence that is going to be with our horticulture, farming, welding, and wildlife, wildland fire programs. And they are currently housed in some of the older and less wonderful facilities that we have. If you come into the campus from the Bieber Creek exit, this, the, you know, the buildings that are on the left, and they've been there for a long time, and they're, and they're great, and they have served us well. But we need more space for these other programs. And so we're really looking at partnering with Oregon State University's Extension Service and creating space and modern services to cover all four of those programs, which are going to be in very high demand. We're also, as, as Tim said, we're going to be moderat, modernizing the learning spaces across our campuses to adapt to what the needs are going to be. And, and they are going to be changing, and they need to be flexible. And we're looking at this as another ten-year, twenty, you know, ten-year bond. So we need to have things that can grow with us and can adapt to the kind of learning that our students are going to be doing. So that is that one. And next one, enhance partner and community connections. A number of the projects are going to directly affect the Clackamas County community and, and the people who work and live there. So we've been partnering with Porton General Electric for more than twenty years at the Wilsonville Campus. And they do their, we have indoor and outdoor training facilities for them there. The campus also is our apprenticeship hub. And it provides technical training and general education courses there as well. So we see the potential of expanding these opportunities and partnerships for the benefit of, of the business, business partners and our community, potentially creating a, a new building in the Wilsonville Campus, looking at, looking at if that is what our need will be. And I'm going to have Dr. Cook talk a little bit about this, about this Challenger Center on one of our campuses. And it is an education nonprofit that develops and delivers simulation-based STEM programs to students at learning centers and classrooms. And it would really support our K-12 in, in the county as well as underserved students who want to explore careers in STEM. And can you describe that? When you talked about that at the board meeting the other night, it was...
Yeah, so the Challenger Center, I mean, we, probably many of you remember nineteen eighty-six, the Challenger space shuttle that blew up, you know, and so the, the name itself is kind of troubling. But that's what they call, that's what this nonprofit calls it. And if you think about a simulation room or building, actually, where you can come in and, and if you've got like a class full of fifth graders, you know, five of them can get to be kind of mission-controlled, some of them get to be on the shuttle. They all get different jobs and they, and they spend a day actually with us going through this simulation. And, and it's not just fifth graders, they're, they have curriculum that kind of spans a K-12 and into college. And actually, they even have talked about businesses and others that do like leadership opportunities where you can come in and do a team-building activity, or you can kind of come in and learn because they have the Challenger simulation, but they've got several other ones too. So it's a really, it's a great opportunity for STEM, for K-12 in our, in our community. But it's also really a good opportunity, I think, to bring people in and really kind of think about and kind of work through the simulation and do some leadership development. And I'll mention, just since I have the mic for a second, you mentioned apprenticeships down in Wilsonville. People are always surprised when they hear that, you know, we have over eleven apprenticeship programs that we teach on our campuses, and about seven hundred apprentices come through. And the reason why I think people don't see that is because, you know, if you know the apprenticeship model, people are working as, with a journeyman during the day, they're getting paid, and then they take their classes at night. And, and so these, you know, these are people for two, three, four years that are working really hard and trying to get a, you know, a living wage, working through that. So whenever I, you know, mentioned people, it's like, you know, did you know we do all these apprenticeships? And if you really want to see what's going on, drop by one of our campuses right about this time. And you'll see full, full parking lots, you'll see people, you know, grabbing dinner before they, before they rush into class and getting that done too.
Thank you. Another part of this that we'll be looking at is improvements to our athletic fields and, which have not been improved for a long time. And so we want to renovate the track field and maybe put in a, a grandstand for sporting events and for graduations, a synthetic soccer field and lighting to support community use. And if you've visited the Oregon City Campus, you've probably seen a lot of people walking around it. And we have a wonderful, wonderful walking trail that has some gaps in it, we want to complete that. But that brings a lot of community members onto the campus. And so we just want to make it safer and, and safer for them to use. Okay, the next page.
Dr. Cook, I don't want to interrupt you, but I want to make sure that the council has time for any questions that they might have. Yeah, so.
Okay, okay, we can almost do, we want to preserve, we're almost done. Preserve and maintain assets, upgrading technology and computer labs. We would do large-scale renovations and large-scale repairs, increasing accessibility, addressing safety standards, improving security. And keeping our IT infrastructure up to date is also critical for our operations. Energy efficiency upgrades, replacing outdated heating systems, all of that kind of stuff, which is, we have not done for, been able to do for a long time. So that is that for the, for the kind of three sections.
Just a couple more then. So we, you know, we, our 2014 bond, we had almost fifty percent matching funds. We certainly have that goal again, you know, if we're able to pass this. One of the exciting projects is that Oregon State University Extension Service. They, they're not only want to partner with us, they want to bring funds in and actually go in with us on a building. So we anticipate quite a large match from OSU, and they would be housed on our campus. We just got back from talking to our federal delegation about some support for, for these projects as well. So we anticipate some federal fundings. And then again, at least a sixteen-million-dollar match from the state as we go along. And we'll, we'll certainly pursue others. So again, this is a renewal, and so it is not anticipated at all to raise taxes. Currently, it's twenty-five cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. So not actual value of homes, but assessed value at twenty-five percent, or twenty-five cents or a quarter. And we're going to maintain that. And then finally, as Jane said at the beginning, you know, what we're doing is trying to get feedback. You know, are these projects resonating? What should we be thinking about? You know, what feedback do you have? We have a site called CCCbond.org if you want to come on and learn more about these. I gave you a little packet with a, like a one-pager, I guess it's a two-pager, double-sided, that explains these a little bit, and then has the address on there. You got, you got a seed packet as well that we've been, we've been giving out. And then an overall flyer about the economic ROI that the college provides. Because I think it's helpful to know that we, we bring in, you know, significant amounts of dollars to the, to the county by, by being here and offering the education. And that, I guess, this isn't part of the presentation, but I'm in Estacada. So I, you know, I thought you might want to know also the, what we're doing with dual credit with the high schools. We partner real, quite a bit with Dr. Ryan Carpenter at an Estacada High School. Last year, we had forty-three students take three hundred and fifteen credits or earn three hundred and fifteen credits at the college, saving about thirty-four thousand dollars in tuition. And then we also started what's called kind of an Estacada Scholars Program. And I believe it's, I want to say it's twenty students, but I might, I might have that number wrong, that apply and are selected and actually able to come to the college and take classes on campus. It's a really great program that, that, that I would give Ryan credit for, for being really thoughtful and thinking about how we can serve the needs of everybody there. And then it's not in our bond, but Ryan and then the superintendents from Alala Colton and Canby and I are all trying to figure out a rural career in technical education solution for, for, for out here. And it's, it's something that we couldn't get in the bond because we still have some more work to do to figure out what that's going to look like and how we're going, and how that's going to come about. But I think it's really important, and, and it's something that we, we will get done to make sure that every kid, regardless of where they live in Clackamas County, has access to the same level of education. That's really important to us. So that's it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions from the council? Or Michael?
I think you guys did a great job presenting the need and explaining the bond. I had a couple questions regarding to your last comments. Is the, is there any restriction on the capacity for the dual enrollment program that's offered to the students of Estacada High School?
The, about whether capacity in a sense like we could take as many kids?
Is it academically, there, there's not enough particip, I'm not saying there's not enough, but I mean, is it restricted? Is there a limited number of spots for kids to have an opportunity?
I think the program, the program that, that they started up this year, they have a limited number of spots that they're doing. And I think that the plan is to expand that and make that, make that bigger opportunity for those kids. I'm talking to Ryan. But the, the dual credit that exists at the high school and, you know, and some of that is either the high school teachers are teaching it or we're doing it online, there's no capacity issues on those. Yeah.
Awesome. Any other questions? Paul?
So this is going to be just replacing the current bond. So there's no real start date, end date on, on this. I guess, when would it start if it were passed, if it were to be passed in November?
If it's passed in November, we would be able then to start the planning and start, you know, pretty much right after that start, and start on that work and getting done the projects and things like that on there. When we did the 2014 one, I think it took, trying to think of when the first, the first building, so we built four buildings, did a bunch of other work. I think it was about four years from passage to getting that first building in place.
And I think I mean more to the impact.
Oh, the impact. Oh.
To the residents.
It would, sorry, it would, yeah, I think, I think it would just replace it, and it would just continue on, is my understanding.
Do you know when that, the current one ends?
I don't.
I'm only asking, I know a lot of our minds are on the Estacada bond.
Your Estacada bond, yeah. I knew that coming in here.
Foremost, yeah. So I know a lot. And I tell you, I meet with so many parents, and I'm impressed with how many of the, the current students of Estacada are already taking classes at Clackamas. I think that's fantastic. I, what would it look like without a bond for Clackamas County?
Yeah, that's a really good question. You know, we would not close up shop. We would, you know, there are some things we'd have to figure out, you know, trying to, you know, do some refurbish and make sure that we're, you know, taking care of these, the buildings and the rest. I think the biggest challenge would be, we wouldn't be able to do that center of excellence around horticulture and wildland fire and welding that we've been talking about with, we might still be able to work with OSU and get that done. But that, that would, I think, be a missed opportunity for our community. You know, as much family generational farming and things that are happening to really, really educate there would be a big one. Some of the other things we would just have to, to put off and figure that out. But yeah, that's, thank you, thank you for that question.
Yeah, thank you. Great. Any other?
Yeah, you had mentioned athletic fields and stuff like that. And as you can imagine, with our community and the amount of children that we have now, our needs.
Yeah.
Is there any plans to open that up to allow club sports and things like that to be able to utilize these facilities and stuff that would be bonding or?
That's exactly the reason why we're doing it. So we get, as it is now, we get lots of clubs or school districts, others that use our facilities. And we don't have a, we don't have a soccer field. And so that's a, that's a demand we get along, we get, we get requests all the time for lacrosse now. We don't have either of those. And then just, we have some, if we were able to upgrade, we've got a, you know, baseball field and a softball field, but we've got spaces where we could upgrade and have some more opportunities there. So as we look at, and then we do a lot around track and cross-country. People come and have meets there. In fact, Nike held their big, large statewide, actually it was beyond state, I mean, you know, thousands, a couple thousands of high school kids had, were on there for cross-country this last year. So lots of those pieces that get used, that is, is really what we're trying to, trying to figure out so that we can accommodate more of the community, whether it's club sports or whether it's the, the school districts. And the grandstand that Jane mentioned, there's not a, a large place in the county where you can hold a graduation or where you can, you know, do something where, where people can sit. And so we see an opportunity there to, you know, where school districts could come or anybody could come and use those, those facilities too for that.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, appreciate your time and presentation was wonderful. And I know, you know, speaking personally, I'm really glad that the Estacada School District, Ryan Carpenter partnered up with Clackamas Community College and did open those slots to do that dual enrollment where kids can graduate with an associate's degree and their high school diploma. I think that's really amazing. And I know last year, they got more applicants than they had expected. So I think that's why there was a little bit of a cutoff, they didn't.
Yeah.
And I know Melanie, your daughter, takes advantage of that. And my son, we went back and forth, but he decided he's, he's on high, our high school campus way too much. But it's just an amazing program. And I know the community can, is really going to benefit it, benefit from that. And it's, yeah, so I appreciate your time and your presentation. I thought it was really well done. And yeah.
Yeah. Twenty, twenty-two percent of our students are high school students. And so, you know, almost, almost a quarter now are high school students. I expect that to continue to grow. I mean, it's, it's just a smart, smart thing to do. And so Ryan's very forward-thinking. I mean, you know, the ten school districts we work with, you know, in Clackamas County, I'm al, I always enjoy talking to him because he's always thinking about how do we do more for Estacada kids? And so we, you know, he's a great partner.
Yeah. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, so next we have item B, Lisa, talking about the Reagan-Christine Memorial Fund. Welcome. Hi, don't forget to use the mic.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Owls. I'm actually here to talk about our Estacada students as well. My story starts out a little bit different. The Reagan-Christine Memorial Fund came to be because my fourteen-year-old daughter was killed on Springwater Road on Memorial Day in 2021 by an impaired driver. And I think it's easy or safe to say that that really rocked our world and our home. And just to share a little with you about Reagan, if, and if you didn't know her, she's an extremely spirited child, full of energy and bubbles and words and kind of made it her business just to know everybody. And she was one of those kids that, she didn't really care where you were from. She didn't care what you looked like, where you lived, or anything like that. She just wanted to be your friend. And so, you know, out of our tragedy, our being my husband Greg and my daughter Delaney. Delaney graduated from Estacada in 2016. We decided we needed to do something in Reagan's name because one of the things that came from her death is I had so many people come up to me and say, you had no idea the impact she had on me. And I really didn't, as her mom, who served her every single day, every second of every single day. I had no idea how much impact she had had on students, teachers, and even parents in the community. So given the extra time that I found I had on my hands, we decided to start a nonprofit organization. So we are a full 501(c)(3). You know, all that good stuff. So we went through all that process. And we have been working on developing a program so we can give back to the students of Estacada. And I just wanted to share with you tonight a little bit about what we've been doing and how we've been spending the money that we've raised. Because I think we're, we've, we've had a good impact so far. And my touches have really just been through kids, through some of the teachers and through the people that I know. But I think the whole city can benefit from understanding the loss, you know, and the challenges that we face as parents, having kids, you know, that have distracted driving or, you know, there's drugs and alcohol everywhere and all of that kind of stuff. And that, you know, it really can happen to you. And that, you know, it really can happen to you because I never thought that it would happen to me. And so part of this is also to make, just to bring some awareness, you know, to our community that we need to work to keep our kids safe. Because I would have never thought that this would have happened. So but with that said, one of the things that we have done is we've held an annual fundraiser. And it's every year in May around the same weekend that Reagan's birthday would be. So like last year, we celebrated her sweet sixteen. She would be a junior at the high school this year and her graduating class would be 2025. But my husband and I are, I guess we're lucky enough to have a wedding venue on our property out in the Redland area. So we have an excellent opportunity to throw this fundraiser and we've had about four to 500 people attend every year. We start the morning off with a cornhole tournament. And we have found somebody every year to make the cornhole boards for us. And then we make them unique. And during that, we have a silent auction. So we then auction the boards off later. The city of Estacada has donated the stage to us since you owned it for the last couple of years. And we've had live music all day long, including some family bands, so to speak, and some local people come and play their music. And this last summer, we had some of the dance team or the dancers from the new dance school in town. They won a competition and so they came and did their dance for us. So that was really fun. And then we do things like face painting. We do a lot of things for the younger generation because we want them to come and enjoy what we're doing for them too, because they stand to gain from it. The silent auction that we do, we've had no less than probably ninety plus things to auction off and really fun things, you know, that are just very unique. People build them, weekends at the beach, you know, things of that nature. So it's just really a fun day. And we use that day to celebrate Reagan. And so a lot of the kids from school will come and be volunteers for us, running around selling things, talking to people, engaging them in the day and telling them, you know, what we're trying to achieve and how we're trying to achieve that. So this year, our annual event's on May eighteenth, Saturday, it's open to the public. I do have a Facebook page called the Reagan Christine Memorial Fund where you can find more information about it. And it's just a super fun thing. We've also done raffles. We've gone through the proper channels with the Department of Justice and, you know, the lottery and all of that to do raffles. So right now we have a rifle that was donated to us to raffle off. And the other thing that we do is the Oregon Bottle Drop Program. So if you've probably seen those all over town, they're either green or blue. The green bags are for your personal use. The blue bags are actually for donations. And last year we raised $6,000 alone just by collecting cans and bottles. So that is, and I brought some bags. I'll leave them back here on my way out tonight. Because you can drop them off right at the grocery store. But that has proven to be a way that we can fundraise all year long without a lot of money or headspace or, you know, having to get in people's faces asking for money all the time. But anyway, those are just some of the things that we're doing. If I can just share with you for a few minutes, just some of the thing, how we've spent our money. Obviously, we want to do college scholarships. So Reagan's number was nineteen. She played softball. She played basketball in nineteen was always her number. So our scholarship is $1,900. And we give two away to Estacada students and one to a Lake County student. We have family and ties to that community as well. So we decided to work with them too. But, you know, we're, we're not necessarily looking for that kid that has straight A's and is in every club. We are looking for kids that want to be involved in their community, kids who do the right thing when no one's looking. Kids that maybe they just have struggles at home. And so maybe they have obstacles and they can't overcome those obstacles, but they work really hard and they mean well. So our scholarship application spends more time asking them, what do they want to do to better the world? And and that sort of thing. And we also ask them in the spirit of, you know, if they know Reagan, you know, what was it about her that would drive them to create a better world for other kids in the community? So that's one thing that we do. Last year, we also gave a service award and that went to a kid who simply had just been helping us with the memorial fund. He'd come over and move tables and chairs, help empty garbage, you know, and just do things like that that we really need a hands for. The Crescendo Dance Studio, I put all of this in a pamphlet for you. I'm sorry I didn't reference it. They needed travel money for their national dance competition to New York. So we gave them $1,000 last year. I work with a youth mentor program in Lake County. That is a resource for kids that don't have resources at home. So we sponsor some stuff with their group. Safe Act, if you have all had kids in Estacada, you know all about Safe Act. And they are doing all their fundraising right now, too. So for those of you who don't know Safe Act, it's a safe and sober party for the seniors. And, you know, each year is supposed to leave a legacy to the next year. So we try to make a sizable donation to their their needs and all that kind of stuff, too. The other things we, so we did two scholarships here this year. We also are big into four H. So we bought two animals at the Clackamas County Fair this year. And we bought two down in Lake County. So Reagan was very involved, very involved in four H. She did cattle and sheep. So we want to continue. I think that's a big part of our community is kids with the four H. So we want to make sure to support that. The other thing that we have tried to do the last couple of years is work with a family in town that needs it, that has kids in the school district. So the first year we started this, we paid for a deposit, a housing deposit to get a family in a home. They were homeless. So we were able to get them into an apartment. And this year, the school helped us identify a family that hadn't had heat for three years. Single mom, two kids. And so we collaborated with a local HVAC, Glacier HVAC, in case you know them. We collaborated with them. They did all the work and we paid for the materials. And this Christmas they had heat and we got them all new sheets and blankets and everything to kind of just dress up their home for the holidays. And so, you know, out of, out of this tragedy, you know, there were two other kids that were killed in the car with Reagan. But out of this tragedy, we're really trying to find hope and and love and bring that to the center of what we're doing in honor of Reagan and even Zach and Jordan, the kids that were with her. So I really, I'm not here to ask you for anything. I'm just here to bring awareness for what we're trying to do. Because even if your kids are old and graduated, you might have grandchildren that come to Estacada. And we would very much love your support at our annual event. Again, it's always going to be in May. I'll make sure that you that you all know about it. And, you know, if there was ever anything that the community wanted to do to raise awareness about kids' safety, you know, we would probably like to participate in something like that. It's not something that I've done so far, but I think it's really important for our kids. So I thank you for your time. In the packet at the bottom of the front page is our mission statement. We are working on our website, so it's not up yet, but we are pretty active on Facebook. I've also included some, some information about our story and then a little bit about the Bottle Drop Program. But thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead, Jerry.
I just want to say that my family is a family that was, that has been impacted by your family and my condolences for your loss. My son grew up with Delaney, graduated with Delaney. She was always a delight on any school function. Anytime I volunteered at the school, she was always a delight, always very polite. And I played pathetic old man basketball with Greg for a couple of years. So just, I, I am sorry for your loss. It was a huge impact on our community when the, you know, when this tragedy happened. And I really appreciate the work that you're doing and what you're, the help that you're giving to this community. Thank you very much.
We're going to do it as long as we can keep doing it.
Yeah. I'm I'm glad you were able to come out tonight because I know I remember hearing you speak a little over a year ago at the school board meeting. And I had, hey, could you come and speak at city council? And Melanie and I were talking like, oh, she's finally on the agenda.
Sorry that took so long.
Yeah, no, no, it's great. I'm glad that you have the opportunity to share this with with city council. And then hopefully it's reached, you know, broader audience other than just, you know, folks that pay attention to school board meetings. And I think this is just an amazing way to honor your daughter's memory. My son graduates in 2025 and he remembers your daughter. And it was a huge impact on this community. And I I think this is just amazing what you guys are doing. And I remember when you gave that presentation at the school board meeting, I was just in shock at what a positive impact this is. And I love how you pick who you're going to give the scholarships to. I love that it's just not the straight A student, not that, you know, just people who want to make a difference. And that's not something that's usually celebrated. It's, you know, the four point student that's in 50,000 clubs. And that just can't be every child. So I appreciate what you guys are doing. And is there a way we could have, like the city could have maybe some sort of link somewhere in community, like a link to their Facebook page or a little blurb about?
Typically, we don't do that.
Is it because it's nonprofit?
Right. But we could, you know, I will definitely, if you give us a, send us the invitation to the celebration, then definitely get that out to the council. And we could, I could think about other, maybe we could hang up flyers or something.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah. Oh, that'd be great. Well, and I would love to be welcome back. I could give you an update every year just on what we've done, just our impact statement. You know, we think that's important to be very transparent about people who are giving us money that we're spending at the right way.
Yeah.
And one of the things too, one of our goals, just I didn't really mention this, but one of our goals is to see this through long term. I mean, this isn't just something we're doing for five years. We're trying to be very smart. We're working with people to help us diversify the funds. Because we really want to be here for a long time, even after Greg and I, we're not going to be able to do this forever. You know, every, every year that goes by, it gets a little harder and harder. But we we recognize how important.
It is. Yeah, thank you. My kid.
What were the hours of the event on May eighteenth?
Oh, ten to ten.
Ten to ten.
All day long.
Excellent. Okay, May eighteenth, ten to ten.
The cornhole tournament, you got to get there fast. We have about fifty people to play, so.
And the website will have the location?
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you for bringing this question.
Yeah, of course. Thanks. Thanks for your time. Have a good meeting.
Thanks for coming. Don't forget to leave those bags.
All right. So now we are at Citizen and Community Group comments. And I have a couple in front of me and I believe we just have, we have one online. Let's start. We've got, I'll start with Scott Strickland. So Scott, before you get started, I just want to read a brief statement here. This goes for everybody commenting this evening. We want to thank you for participating in public comment this evening. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak. Don't forget to use a mic. Our governing body takes the input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting Laws, this isn't the time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city manager and city recorder are taking notes of action if needed. Okay, with that, your three minutes can start.
Thank you, Councilor Hughes, members of the council. For the record, my name is Scott Strickland, proud resident of Estacada, father and union member. I'm here to speak in support of the work that the DEIC has done. I think it is absolutely invaluable. As we've heard from from several of the committee members already, even one who was very, very skeptical, it's not the boogeyman that we hear about on the internet. It is neighbors helping neighbors. It is neighbors helping neighbors to make sure that we expand our perspectives to make government more accessible and more inclusive for everyone. And as a union member, I can speak to the importance that my union has put over a million dollars into grant writing. And I've had to learn more about grant writing than I ever wanted to. I guarantee it's it's more more boring than you can imagine. But that grant writing is going to secure union jobs to pull down as much of this federal infrastructure money. We're talking billions and billions of dollars. Billions and billions of dollars, billions with a B. That is a once in a generation opportunity that we have to make sure that this money does not just get funneled into City of Portland, City of Eugene in downtown areas, that this goes out to the communities like ours where we desperately need it to support these jobs, union and otherwise, building infrastructure that provide full family medical, that provide retirement, that provide opportunities for folks if they are single parents to provide childcare, which we know is prohibitively expensive and and impossibly difficult to find for folks. This is absolutely invaluable work that cannot be done after the fact. This is a standing committee that we have to support. If there's criticisms, that's fine. The whole point of its inclusion, we have folks, it sounds like, that are skeptical members of the committee, and I'm glad that we have that diversity of opinion. But I cannot overstate the critical nature of this work. And it is not something that I even would have fully understood prior to being a father, prior to understanding how important it is to have accessible parks and other facilities for for young parents, right? Especially parents that don't have access to other, you know, broad family members in in the area. So that's pretty much everything I have to say. Oh, you have the rest of my time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Next on the list, we have Katie Absher. I don't know. I don't think I said it right.
All right. I wrote it down. My name is Katie Absher, and I just wanted to say a few words regarding the future of the DEIC and the potential disbanding of said committee. As you well know, the committee was formed in 2020 after countless listening sessions, town halls, city council comments, and even a march against our own mayor. The committee was established by a six zero vote because it was loud, clear, and bipartisanly unanimously agreed on that this committee was necessary for all of our citizens, especially ones that find themselves in a minority group, whether it be racial, disability, income, or otherwise. Our city needs this committee because we are a city filled with diversity. If you're not happy with the committee or what it has achieved, then use this as an opportunity to make it better by giving clearer direction about where you want the committee to go and how you want it to succeed. But we as a city cannot afford to lose a committee whose commitment is to the diversity of the people of Estacada. Even a baker needs you to tell them which flavor you want your cake. They can't just guess until they get it right. Since I've got a minute and a half left still, I told myself if I've got some extra minutes, I was going to speak about the splash pad. I just want to stress to the council that everything that you do, every decision that you make is within city limits. You're not in the middle of nowhere country. If this council really bases its decisions on whether or not NIMBYs, which by the way, NIMBY stands for not in my backyard. If you make your decisions based on whether or not NIMBYs will throw a fit, this city would have no amenities. No parks, community centers, or docks to the river. Sometimes living in a city means that we have to share our space with our neighbors, even our distant neighbors. But Star Trek said it best, the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few. And I'll yield my last minute. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, we have. Let's go to our online and then I'll get to another comment here. So who do we have online? Okay. Kimberly Ables. All right, whenever. Technology.
Kimberly, we're trying to bring you in, but hopefully it will work. There you are.
Hi.
Okay, I'll get started. My name's Kimberly Ables. I live off Deuce Road in Estacada. And I'm here to voice my support for the continuation of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee as its own unit, however you choose to name it. This committee is young and it needs time to learn how to engage with a community and understand the role it plays with city council. Simply making a list of interested individuals is the opposite of good engagement because you will continue to only hear from the voices you know. Council meetings can be scary for many people. We all know more people would rather be the subject of a eulogy than the person standing up to give one. However, having a smaller space that's free from higher However, having a smaller space that's free from hierarchy or peering eyes where people can connect and know their perspectives will get to council and that welcomes differing opinions can be much more attractive. The strongest component of this committee is the inclusion. Have you considered the accessibility of our city's workshops and council meetings? There's no captions or listening devices for those hard of hearing. Our agendas and packets can't be read via screen readers for those who are visually impaired. And it's really not helpful. That if you want to testify for a council meeting, you can only find out how to do that, that you have to do it three hours in advance. And it's written in the small print on the back of the agenda packet. So I strongly encourage you to provide constructive and concrete feedback to the DEI and then allow time for progress. With three new members coming on board, there will be new ideas, new energy and new faces for our community to reach out to. While review of documents and processes can be the bread and butter of the committee, its strength and intrinsic value will lie in expanding the spectrum of people our leaders hear from. We should demand accountability for everyone and not shy away from hard conversations because it increases transparency in our practices and our decisions. I sit on several volunteer boards for the community and all have a goal related to increasing diversity in our audiences. In the workshop prior to this meeting, we heard several committees mentioned trying to expand their audience or reach more people. Identifying who's missing from our events, our sports teams, our conversations, or our community tables, excuse me. In order to learn how to reach them is what the DEIC should hold and do best. I was really disheartened to hear one of our counselors in that workshop refer to the committee as you guys, not of this community or others. And this is the language that in and of itself represents how differing opinions are not welcomed and usually met with defensiveness instead of learning. Your council mission states you are to be responsive and representative of the citizens and their needs. And that you work towards a strong sense of community and bring diversity and a strong community spirit to your work. Goal two of the city aims for being stronger together through connections and knowledge. Time and time again, proven over and over, the strongest and most resilient communities are those that value inclusion to create a more harmonious, just, prosperous and respectful environment.
Sorry, Kim, that's time. Sorry.
I assure you, um, you will, it will lead to long-term benefits for our society and not just in grant funds. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, and then I got someone else here. Vincent. Come on down.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak on the DEIC committee real quick. There are real world benefits to paying attention to that committee and seeing what they're truly recommending to people. Just last meeting, they talked about, uh, like including Spanish speaking, uh, Spanish speakers in the city's board for when they have like burst pipes and stuff like that. They host a summit every year where we can, where our committees can connect with other committees and work together on projects. That's how we started trying to work together with the arts commission or working together with safety or whoever. We connect via that commission and they make good recommendations like in Wade Creek. We just installed those new paths. They are, they're good paths, they're natural, but they are not ADA accessible. They talked about that in their last meeting. You know, that, those are the types of inclusion you need someone to be looking at because it's not inclusion based on, if you, if you generally watch the meetings and not just, you know, get what you hear from other people, if you sit down and watch them, they're, they're truly trying to include the elderly, disabled people, you know, it's not, it's not just based on like the boogeyman woke, like ideal ideological, like theories people think it is. It's truly including rural Estacada elderly people and ensuring they have proper facilities and are able to participate in the community. And it gives people a space where they can voice their opinions without, uh, you know, boasters people in the audience, you know, potentially, you know, booing them down or whatever it is, right? You know, it's, it's a space for public discourse and they make good real world recommendations that help not just their own committee, but every committee in the city. That's all I want to say about that, but thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have anybody else? No, we're good. All right. Thank you for your comments, everyone. All right. And now we are on to the consent agenda. And I just really quickly, before we approve or not the consent agenda, I just wanted to pull out ordinance 2023 dash 008, the clerical correction. And, um, just go over that really quickly and just what that entail, just, um, so we're all aware and that community knows what's, what that was all about. Yeah, that'd be great, Melanie.
Okay. And there is a staff report in there.
Yes.
However, there we go. Okay. So basically, um, the reason I have this in here in the consent agenda is that when the council was doing the second reading of the ordinance to change the downtown Estacada code, the, they made it, you made it very clear at your first reading that you wanted to add in the ground floor commercial element to the Riverside area. So we did that and staff made the changes. And then as we were putting the packet together, the one that got sent to get put in the packet was not, it wasn't the latest version. And so, um, it's, it wasn't the correct version. It didn't include what the council wanted in there. So I know when you approved that at your, at the second reading where we don't really, you didn't have to discuss it, you'd already discussed it. Everybody would assume that that's what was being approved. However, it, in the packet was the wrong page, so we wanted to make sure that we had that in there and acknowledge that error. And I also just wanted to say on my behalf, um, as being responsible for that, I feel like we've had a couple errors in the past couple of months, few months. And I think it is because we're, the staff is stretched pretty thin. And so we're ordinarily, if some, you know, it's human to make a mistake, but somebody else will catch that, you know, well, because we kind of all proofread. You know, we're looking at the packet, you're all looking at the packet, but, um, we, we've been missing things. And so a couple of things that I've done to, um, hopefully ease that burden is we're looking at getting a very small contract, but it'd be a contract with the HR firm to help us alleviate some load from the front office. And then also we've just put out a RFP for planning services from a private company. We used to get, um, planning services assistance from the county, but they cannot do that for us anymore because they are at their capacity. So we put out a RFP to get some assistance in case we get too many projects. Cause you never know when they're coming in to the planning department, when subdivisions or whatever are coming in. So we'll just have that kind of tucked away. And if we realize that, hey, we don't have the capacity or timeframe to do this, then we'll, um, pull it, push it to them, to that company, whoever ends up being the, the best respondent. So I'm trying to make some adjustments to, to lighten the load and so we're not running so thin. And, but that's why that's in the, the consent agenda.
Cool. Yeah, I appreciate your candor on that because that's, you know, it's like not fun to admit, hey, we made a mistake. And so appreciate that and, and, um, bringing that out. So I guess, um, we've all looked at the agenda as, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, then moved. Is there a second?
Wait a second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Okay, pass this. Okay, moving on to department and committee reports. Does anybody have anything they want to share with our committees or commissions? No? Okay, then it's me. And it's long because it's school board. Okay. Here we go. District communications report, there was school bond information. The end of January poll results, results were, um, so they had some columns of negative feedback and positive feedback as they were doing their January poll. And then they kind of looked at what are the, the, the top three topics that people had, you know, issues with the school bond versus, you know, what they were really in favor for. So some of the negatives were, um, and I'm, I'm paraphrasing what was on their screen. So one was while schools need updates, the school just district needs to rework these projects for less money. That's one. Our current economy is a concern with inflation slash rising costs of families struggling financially. Two, that's totally valid. Uh, the bond isn't the right fit for Estacada. We don't need to spend 140 million on a modern school. So those were the negatives of positives. The support of needing repairs, i.e. heating, ventilation, AC roofing, plumbing, including the removal of rusty pipes as well as the removal of other hazardous material like asbestos, air quality, especially during the summer. When you go back to school, because we, we go back to school in, in August and a lot of times it's still a hundred degrees. And, um, so, and, and we're rolling into fire season. So when the air quality is terrible, um, the levels get really bad. And then schools are forced to close the windows and then you have no AC. So then you're hotboxing the children. And that's, so everyone agrees that's not a good thing. And then security, so people really, the positives were a need for security technology with cameras, locking systems, bulletproof windows, cool, uh, secure vestibule entries, et cetera. So the voters also recognized the need for reducing overcrowding in schools. That was another thing that everyone was, um, uh, in agreement on, uh, because I know River Mill is definitely busting at the seams. And even though the Estacada High School is very, in theory can house a thousand students, half of that building is not usable. It's not safe. So, um, I think, I think the community is starting to recognize that. So for voting, the may electoral electorate, electorate, geez, historically, there are 1,200 registered voters that turn out to vote. This is historical out of a 13,800 pool of voters. So that's a little discouraging. The district is basically going to try to encourage a get out to vote campaign. They're not telling people how to vote, but they recognize the large swaths of registered voters who are not exercising their constitutional and democratic right to process. So, um, I echo that. I really want people to get out to vote. I'm not telling you how to vote, but just go, go vote, people, please. Political action committee is being formed by the community members whom are volunteering to get information out to the public about the school bond as well as encouraging people to vote in general. So that was the district communications report. So as you can see, everything is very, you know, heavily bond focused. And we'll get to as what they voted on. Building facility report, capital improvements such as, uh, cooling center project for the high school seismic grant project. The, um, Estacada Middle, Middle School, they're doing, um, they're trying to get mini splits in there. And they just, um, voted on the contractors. They had a lot of contractors put in bids and that was great. That's, they've never had that before. And so, um, they'll get, they're going to get started on that. Current student population, 1,916. And that is just in the Estacada School District. That's not including, um, the charter school. All right. And superintendent carpenter really wanted to, um, highlight the special education graduation rate. It ended at 83% this year, and that's the highest on time graduate, graduation rate with the special ed community. The state average is 68%. So Estacada, we were at 83. So that's amazing. And then in 2017, this is how much it's improved since 2017. The graduation rate was 30%, 37% for the special education. So it's, it's definitely seen some huge improvements. Superintendent Carpenter addressed growth, what kind of growth the community's been seeing within the school district. And just a little thing, they had it, they had their audit. They found two items that were of error can, um, and I think the two items, they were not a loss of money or property. It was simply a clerical error that was then corrected. So much like what the city of Estacada is going through right now, they, you know, they, there's a lot of change and a lot of growth. And it just, everything was just stretched a little bit too thin. Couple little errors were found. And according to their auditor, it was, um, basically no big deal and those schools have many. So to find two measly ones that were kind of a big deal was, I guess, good. And if everybody hasn't heard already, after all that discussion, but it's already been public because this, this was on February 14th. So if you haven't heard already, the school bond measure will go to vote for the may election. So that will be on the ballot. And that's my report on the school board. So I guess then city manager report.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple of things. Um, first of all, I wanted to report that the second phase of the generator project at the, uh, water treatment plant has been completed. They finished installing that last week and a test run was performed today and it runs the entire water plant. Uh, when the generator running, um, and, and then I asked, so it runs it today, but when we upgrade, because we're going to make some adjustments to that, um, some minor adjustments, increasing pipe sizes and stuff so that we can get the full 2.0 that the plant is designed to, um, 2.0 million gallons a day that the plant is designed for, will it still run it? And Chris said, yes, absolutely it will. So that's fantastic because we can, um, we didn't used to worry about it so much. If power went out in the winter, water usage is low. We have the reservoirs, um, power comes on pretty fast. But now with the, um, sometimes the safety shut offs that they'll do in the summer, PGE is aware of where our water plant is at. So they know, you know, if they're shutting it, it down this grid or whatever, it would shut down our water plant. However, we know now that we can run that, um, it takes about 13 gallons of fuel per hour. And they would run it intermittently to make sure that they're filling the, um, reservoirs and then they let it rest. And so we could operate for about three days with that, um, is the estimate at this point. So I'm glad to report that. And secondly, the main street construction project is going well. We did have to start early, at least, um, one day last week, they started early because they had, um, some, you never know what, you, you think you know what you're going to find underground and then it always is a little bit surprising. And they were, they had, uh, concrete coming at a certain, I think at eight o'clock in the morning. And then so they started about 6:30, um, which there are people that live down here. And so, um, that was, that surprised them a little bit because they started a little bit early. However, this morning they started about two o'clock in the morning.
My husband heard that.
Did he?
Yes.
It's so, because it's so quiet down here at night and I think, I'm sure it must've just echoed up the hill. It's going to be right here in this block. Um, and so, you know, the apartments are down there and, uh, but we did hear from a few people because what, what it was is they needed to shut down a water line. They were reconnecting a water line. And they wanted to do the work and get done, uh, as soon as they can, because it was Salt Tapatio, gas station, city hall, Yautreets. So they wanted to get that back up and running, uh, you know, as soon as possible when businesses were going to be open. But they ran into some complications, but they did get it done. But yes, and I do apologize for often to do that, not considering that the echo of being down in the bowl here and things going up the hill. So we will definitely try to stick to the timeframe that they're supposed to work, starting at 7:00 AM. And if it's going to be early, then we'll, uh, get some notices out. And, uh, but we did notice, we tried to notice for this, for this one in the middle of the night. But if anybody wants to be on the email list for updates on Main Street, just email info at cityofestacada.org and we can add you to that email update list. And then lastly, I wanted to provide a response to a comment that we got at the last council meeting. I did not, I think it was Tim Mays is, is the person that was, uh, uh, sharing this. And I did not have an email or phone number. I assumed they'd be here tonight because they've been very consistent at attending. But anyway, if, in case they're listening and in case anybody wants to, um, pass this on to them. They, uh, he had, um, typed up a little report that he'd put together. And he said he'd gone through the Estacada Municipal Code Downtown, Chapter 16.26. And his goal is to try to protect the waterfront. Um, he was quoting the uses permitted outright. And in section D2 of that section for the downtown code talks about, the multifamily dwellings and it provides a, a minimum density so that like you can't just build a single family residence in this zone. Uh, it has to have a certain number. I will read it because I don't know how to describe it otherwise. The residential density of the development is not less than 16 dwelling units per acre. And, and there's an and there, and he was trying to determine where to go next to find out if there's an, it must mean there's something else. And he was looking for the maximum density. So he jumped to a different section of the code, which was, um, section, he said, you, to determine what is missing, you must refer to, um, title 16 dot 60 dot 070, which is a completely actually different section of the code. And so if you just, after the and there's a, there's one, there's two, and three is where it's supposed to be going. And it, um, just requires that standards are met. And this is in, I'm just reading straight down. just requires that standards are met. And this is in, I'm just reading straight down sixteen point two six point oh two oh. But I think that the difficulty is there, he couldn't find the maximum density for the downtown zone because there is no maximum density. In other zones, we do have a minimum and a maximum, but not in the downtown zone. So it was slightly confusing.
Their height, their height and other setbacks that that will limit
constrain it.
Will constrain the development. You couldn't do like the, you know, Empire State Building here. But there is not a unit per acre max. The the max is determined by the size of the project.
So I just wanted to share that because I know that he'd gone to a lot of work to put that together. And so I thought I'd respond to his comment.
Okay.
And that is all that I have. Any questions?
Right. Any questions?
I I just want to say, as someone who is being impacted by the Main Street, I very much appreciate the communication. Evelyn's doing a great job of getting those emails out on a regular basis. And I've heard that from some of my peers down here.
Thank you. That's good to hear. She's I think she's doing a great job, too. And we're meeting every Thursday with the contractor. So if there's questions, you know, if people get questions to us, we can ask and pass on the answers then. So.
Alrighty. All right, moving on to council business, we have item A, Advanced Finance District, Woodland Water Woodland Road Waterline Discussion.
Okay, this, and Peter, feel free to weigh in on this, but it's fairly simple. And we put in a water line up on Woodland Road and Lawrence Road. And a lot of times, those major water lines like that would go in concurrent with a development. However, this was put in ahead of time because it's going to serve the north end of the city that's still there. I mean, that's already there. And we're also going to be building another reservoir to provide some redundancy. Because at this point, we have one high level reservoir that feeds the north end of town. And if something happened, then we'd have at the time, it was like five hundred homes that'd be out of water until we could make that repair. So this will provide redundancy and additional storage for the rest of the city, too. And so it's very typical that when when infrastructure goes in ahead of development, an advanced financing district will be set up. And that means that it doesn't affect any of the property owners that are currently living there on their property. If they they don't have to pay anything. If they sell their property, they don't have the new person doesn't have to pay anything. If they sell to a developer who wants to subdivide it, then that developer would contribute as amount that's predetermined to help pay for that that infrastructure that is already in place. So I tried to do a good job of describing it in the staff report. The council in two thousand twenty one approved three different advanced finance districts. And so just what we're asking today, is that something that is of interest to look into? Because according to the city code, we're allowed to do it. But the council needs to make a motion in order for the engineer to do the research on what it would entail and bring a report back to you that you could evaluate to see if you want to go forward with that process, which then would include a public hearing and all that. So do you have questions? Or did you want to say anything, Peter?
No, this is this is a pretty common tool, whether it's used by the city based or or used by other developers that have to put in the infrastructure. If someone later in time then biggybacks on that development, then they would pay their proportional share. So that the city would only recover if those properties develop at a higher density than they are. It's it's based on frontage. So you're only paying for they would only be paying for kind of their well, the engineer does the calculation, but they're only paying for their section. And it's it's never a full recovery for the city because invariably there are parcels that won't develop. But it is one way that the city can recover costs that would otherwise normally be incurred by the developer who would then, if other people developed and relied on, you know, the larger pipes and everything get reimbursed. So it's something we see pretty commonly.
Any questions on that?
And the motion is just to get more information from the engineer on getting all the analytics done for it.
Yes, the motion would be to direct city engineer to prepare an engineering report and bring back information to council for consideration.
I so move.
Okay, we have motion on floors or second?
Well, second.
Okay. First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, passes. All right, so moving on to item B on council business, the City Manager Review. So I think we've all had a minute to look at the three different models that were proposed to us. And I think you're just staff just wanting to get feedback tonight as to which which direction to to move as far as which model we want to use.
Which form resonates.
Review. Gotcha.
Which is more applicable that you would like to evaluate the city manager position on. And then also the process that's proposed in the staff report of having the council meet an executive session without city manager present to discuss and then to present the direction to so it's a unified kind of a here's what the council thinks, rather than going one by one. And it it seems like it would be more cohesive to do it that way.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, Heidi.
I think I talked about this with you before in our meeting that I want to know what one you would prefer and would give you the most information to do your job best.
Thank you for that. I I think any of them are would be useful. I guess my preference would be Form Three. It's a lot of questions and and Form One is very similar with a kind of a format. But Form Three, if we if you want to do, I think Form Two is for the creative writers of the group. And if that's what you prefer, I think that would be fine, too. In fact, but instead of examples, it has a spot for providing examples for why you're doing that evaluation. You could we could just change that to comments or something. But I would be open to any of them. I think the the third one is from the ICMA, which is International City Managers Association. That's kind of a standard form. And it seems to be very thorough, but I'm open.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone opinions or? I like three. I'm just gonna I I like three, but I also liked this is where I was going to say I have a little twist. If we could have the scale of three and the information of three, but I like the way that number two is set up. It's just very clean. Maybe I don't I don't consider myself a creative person, but if that's for the creative minded, then but I like that it's it's just very clean. So if, you know, maybe we could just write we could have those same, you know, one through five, and then put the numbers in. And then instead of having say examples, just say comments or something. And it doesn't have to be horizontal. It could be, you know, if there's, I think if there's just a space for comments on that Form Three underneath individual characteristics, and then professional skills, you know, you mark two, five, whatever. And then you have a space for comment. If one so chooses, I I mean, that seems to kind of resonate with with me as far as evaluate. It seems more thorough. And then we have the opportunity to give feedback on those specific sections if we so desire. But that's just what was looking good to me. So I'm open to whatever.
I think three gets the most information. Three gathers the most information. So I think we're going to get a more accurate evaluation with the third applicant or the third third one. Yes.
I'm good with one or three. I didn't really care for two.
That was a one or three as well, too. But I like the idea of three with the comment.
Yeah, yeah. Well, well, I think, I don't know, I think what I'm hearing is we're we're good with three with maybe some space for comments.
Reformat that a little bit.
General consensus.
Yeah, general consensus.
And then the format. The the format of of, you know, last the last time we would we we spoke publicly to Melanie. And then I I like the suggestion of that the city manager would leave the room that would give us the chance to have that executive session and and open conversation and then bring the city manager back in at that point and and bring a consensus review.
I would agree with that.
I would agree with that as well. Yeah.
It it does. It did get a little awkward.
It was a little awkward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was. It's probably awkward for you as well.
Right. All right, we'll go we'll go forward with that with the recommended process. And I will take number three and kind of just revise the format of that. And
Perfect. And then do we need is there language on this that we need to how this needs to read out or for approval?
I did do a recommended motion there. I can't remember.
I got it.
You got it?
I moved to approve that Form Three with the recommended changes will be utilized in the annual evaluation of the city manager along with the process as presented.
I second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes. Great. And now we're on to the final citizen and community group comments. Do I have anybody? No, no, nothing. Okay. Anyone online? Yeah.
Nothing.
It's getting quiet out there.
That's all out early.
All right. And that just leaves us with Mayor and Council final reports and comments. And Heidi, I'll start with you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that it was really good to see the community come out and interested in just the workshop and how we figure out what we want for committees. I I definitely want to just make sure that this letter that has the signatures will be in the public record. I recommend that everyone reads it, especially once it gets into the public record. I've had a pretty rough year so far, and thank you for giving me some grace to take some time. But yeah.
Okay, thank you, Heidi. Paul?
I just want to say thanks for a great discussion tonight. I feel like we got through quite a bit and and the city for getting us prepped and everything as well, too, and for folks showing up and participating. It's awesome.
Awesome. Mike?
Thanks, everybody for coming out.
Jerry?
I was really surprised to see the amount of people that he showed up, spoke their spoke their opinions and support of DEI. I hope that that's taken to heart. That's the one of the largest outpouring of support we've had for an individual individual issue in a while. So hopefully, everybody takes that to heart. And it's something it's something I do believe that this city needs. I'm really surprised that we have a city council meeting and Tom McInnany didn't have anything to say. But I really appreciate everybody that everybody that came out and the the great discussion tonight. It was it's really good. And then, of course, as always, the amazing work city city staff puts in and even checking themselves, even catching themselves in an air, you know, and just bringing that back to us. I appreciate the work. Thank you guys so much.
Great. Jonathan?
Yeah, I just thanks everybody that came tonight, shared your opinions. It's appreciated to hear from people for sure. We got a lot of tough decisions to make, and I couldn't imagine getting to make it with better people, to be honest with you guys. I just want to echo for the record that I appreciate that we can have a conversation, agree, disagree, or whatnot, but that we can sit up here as adults and talk and talk through things. I look forward to seeing what comes comes from all of this. And I hope the mayor gets to feeling better and can be here to participate the next one.
Great. Well, thank you, everybody for coming tonight. Thank you for putting up with me a little last minute run in the show. So thanks for extending grace as I kind of stumble over this. I'm not as smooth as Mayor Drinkwine is. He's he's got this down. So I appreciate you guys giving me grace tonight as I just kind of muddle my way through. I also want to echo what Counselor Metcalfe said, and I I think that we do have a really for lack of a better term, adult council. And even though if if even if we do have a disagreement, I think we're really good about discussing things, being open to listening to different points of view. And yeah, it's been it's been a really good discussion so far. And I look forward to the future discussion and workshop with as we go over these committees. Yeah, I think I I'm I'm feeling really good about it. And I thank everybody for coming tonight, and we'll see you to the next one.